All right. Welcome, everyone, to the Bountiful City Council meeting for Tuesday, April 27th. We are excusing Mayor Randy Lewis today, and so I will be serving as the mayor pro temp. Our first order of business for our meeting today is that we have asked Mr. Paul Summers, who I was trying to catch before the end of the last meeting, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance today.
Please stand and repeat the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Paul. Next, we will have a thought or a prayer, and with us today, we have Pastor Mike Schlaman. I'm hoping I pronounced that right.
Yeah, I mean, it's Mark.
Yes, Mark. My apologies. And Pastor, if you wouldn't mind coming up, I understand that you are new to our community, and so before you give the prayer, if you wouldn't mind maybe just giving us a little bit of background about you and how you've come to Bountiful.
It is my pleasure to be here this evening. I am serving as the interim pastor at Cross of Christ Lutheran Church here in Bountiful. I live in Tuella. I serve a congregation there, and I also work full-time in Tuella as well. I am here in Bountiful at Cross of Christ because the former pastor, Pastor Crowsey, who has been before you a few times, has taken a position at a couple of churches in Nebraska. And so I am serving in the interim until a permanent successor is named.
Well, we thank you for being willing to make the commute from Tuella to Bountiful, and I'm sure that your parishioners here appreciate that you're willing to make that commute as well. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Bradshaw, members of the Bountiful City Council and citizens of the city of Bountiful. It is my privilege and honor to stand before you this evening, beginning this meeting with a brief devotion, thanks to the invitation from Mayor Lewis. I bring greetings to all of you from the members of Cross of Christ Lutheran Church here in Bountiful, and as this is my first time before you, I want you to know that we at Cross of Christ keep you and all our elected and appointed leaders in our prayers on a regular basis, as you are God's representatives in temporal affairs in this city. As Christians and citizens, we at Cross of Christ recognize that it is our duty to pray for all who make, administer, and judge our laws. Such prayers have the invitation, command, and exhortation of God behind them, as the blessed Apostle St. Paul, under inspiration of the Holy Spirit, wrote in his first letter to the young pastor, St. Timothy. I urge then, first of all, that petitions, prayers, intercession, and thanksgiving be made for all people, for kings and all those in authority, that we may live a peaceful and quiet life in all godliness and holiness. This is good and pleases God, our Savior. Bearing these words in mind, please join me in a word of prayer for our mayor, our mayor pro temp, council, and all in authority. Almighty, everlasting God, King of kings, from whom all rank and power proceed, who instituted temporal authority and committed to it the sword for the punishment of the wicked and the protection of the good, lead all temporal lords and rulers, especially our mayor, mayor pro temp, and city council, in your way, that they may keep the common peace, turn away from us war and sedition, rebellion and anarchy, and nurture whatever makes for peace, honor, and justice. To that end, oh Lord of hosts, give them your divine blessing, the righteousness of Moses, the meekness of David, the zeal of Phineas, the strength of Samson, and the wisdom of Solomon. May it can keep them steadfast in good, courageous in adversity, confident in affliction, joyful in sorrow, reliable in distress, victorious in temptation, unmoved in prosperity, and wise, strong, and prosperous in all their endeavors. Let their government serve for the suppression of tyrants, peace in this present time, and the protection of all our citizens. These things we pray in the strong name of Jesus, Savior of mankind, crucified and risen to take away the sin of the world. Amen.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is our public comment period. We have 10 minutes of public comment at the beginning of each of our city council meetings, two minutes for each resident. You'll notice up here, we have what I like to think of as the shot clock that gives the time for two minutes. I will note that we have an item on our agenda, item number seven, that has its own separate public hearing where the public is able to speak. So if you are here to talk to that issue, which is about the Renaissance Town Center Development Plan, you will want to wait and not use this initial time period of public comment, but wait for item number seven, when you'll have an opportunity to comment specifically on that item. So with that, we'll open up public comment time if there's anyone that would like to address the council. As Mayor Lewis would say, it doesn't appear we have anyone that's brave tonight. So we will move on to item number three on the agenda, which is the approval of minutes from our previous meetings.
Mayor Pro Tem, I motion that we approve the minutes from our meetings held on April 5th, 6th, 8th, 12th, and 13th of 2021.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Mayor Pro Tem, could I just offer a quick thanks? After looking through these minutes, I'll wait for an answer.
Yes, please go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Sorry about that. After looking through the minutes again, I was reminded again about the enormous amount of work that went into our budget hearings. Wanted to thank staff again and the city manager and all those involved for not only the work that went into the budget preparation, but also the new format that highlighted department goals, et cetera. I thought it was probably the best year of budget hearings yet. So, thanks to those who participated.
I concur. They were very thorough minutes, and they were very interesting meetings. Thank you. All right. We'll now turn to our council reports. Councilman Simonson, can we start with you?
Sure. Thank you. The Bountiful Veterans Park Committee is having a Memorial Day service at our Veterans Park next door, which will be on May 31st at 11:00 PM, and all are invited to attend, and more information will be coming out as we get closer. Thank you.
PM or AM?
11:00 AM.
Oh. I was gonna say that's late.
I wanted to see who was awake. I saw some eyes over there by our city attorney drooping there.
Oh, I heard it.
Okay, thanks.
I was just gonna be there at 11:00 PM.
Councilwoman Harris, any council reports?
I don't have a report, but I was going to ask, just for an update, we had talked about having somewhere in City Hall in Godwee Trust and some founding documents displayed. And so I sent an email today, and I just wanted to ask Gary if he'd be willing to give us a public update about that.
Sure. So Rebecca is working on that. She met probably two weeks ago with the Historical Foundation to try and scrounge up, find some historical Bountiful documents and things, and tell she has those, so right now, she doesn't have a layout yet. Once there's a layout, she'll look around and look for a location, and then we'll bring that back with a couple of recommendations from the group. So, work in progress. She's also, some of the other things that she's spending most of her time on right now are getting the farmer's market up and going with Francisco and the Public Art Board, and so that's just one of a few projects. So hopefully that the timing's okay.
She's great. I'm glad that she's on board. Thank you.
Councilwoman Segura, have nothing to report this evening. All right, Councilman Higginson.
Nothing. Thank you.
All right. For my update, I wanted, I've shared this with the council, but for the public record, we had a great Bountiful Trails Advisory Volunteer Day this last Saturday at North Canyon, working on the single-track trails in North Canyon, both the uphill and the downhill trail. We had over 150 volunteers turn out. The vast majority of the volunteers were high school and junior high students from the mountain bike teams of our three high schools. And we made great progress on those two trails, which I think will be great additions to our Trails Master Plan, and wanted to also shout out our parks staff, who, you know, that was a day off for them that they came in to work on that project and be there to lead and guide and to, you know, drive the dump trucks, and also our Bountiful Trails Advisory Committee, which is a completely volunteer committee that has put in a lot of hours to get to the point where we are doing great projects. So it was a fun Saturday, and it was fun to see those trails really start to take shape. All right. That is the end of our council reports, so we'll move to item number five, which is consideration of the approval of expenditures greater than $1,000 for April 5th and 12th.
Happy to make a motion that we approve the expenditures from those two dates as printed.
Second. If a motion is second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We will now turn to item number six, recognition of Mr. John Cushing. And before I go to Alan, I'm actually gonna turn some time over to our city manager, Gary Hill, to share some thoughts, and then we'll go to Alan.
We have a great, and in a way sad, opportunity to recognize a former mayor and longtime Power Commissioner, John Cushing, tonight. And John, we're gonna have you come up in just a second, but Mayor Lewis wanted me to take a minute where he was not able to be here tonight and say a couple, make sure a couple of things were said. One is he is very sad that he's not able to be here with his blood brother, and you know what that means, and he knows what that means. And he says that there are lots of ways that he can make it up to you, and he intends to make it up to you to not being here tonight, but just to express his love and gratitude to you, not only as a friend, but as someone who's dedicated so much time and energy to the community. And with that, I think we'll invite Alan to come up and say a few words, if that's okay. Alan?
I want to echo what Gary and the mayor has expressed, that we have, it's really a sad time. I mean, you hit that point, but, you know, I keep calling him Mayor Cushing, because that's what he was, the councilman, a two-term mayor, 14 years on the Power Commission. I don't know that people necessarily recognize what a powerhouse this man has been for the Power Department and even the community, the insight and the knowledge and the kindness, always a gentleman. But he's gone through things. He's seen us through the power crisis of 2000. He's seen us through windstorms. He's been here during windstorms and volunteer time, when people were at our office, especially in 2011, when it was so cold. He volunteered to stand there and listen to people that was just furious, because we couldn't get the power on quick enough, and he sat there like a trooper. I went through that. But most of all, I'm gonna say, he's a friend, and John has been a great friend and mentor to go through here, and I, it saddens me that I won't be seeing him every month and talking to him a couple of times a month, because his insight has been very valuable, his financial wisdom and his insight, the knowledge he has of what the people and his ear to the people thing is, we are really going to miss the insight he has. It's great that we get to honor him again. We did spend some time at the Power Board, but it's great that he was able to come here and hear the fact that this great man and the dead service that he has done for this city, and I'm sure he's not done, he's just gonna do it in a quieter way and not be here with us all the time, so.
Thanks, Ellen.
But I just want to know how much I appreciate John, what he has done, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah.
Pardon me. You know, first, I was gonna say, when I got involved in this over 20 years ago, it's a pretty easy job, except when I first came in, I was 6'4" and 250 pounds. You see what it did to me, so you better keep that into mind, but. I can only say is that, you know, if you accept the responsibility, or you're elected to an office, or whatever it might be, I don't know, I never had thought I would be getting involved in this many years ago, until Mayor Linnell and some of the others persuaded me to do that, and you know, when you do something, you have a responsibility or a job or a duty or a calling, and you enjoy it, you really probably don't need anybody to pat you on the back and give you any recognition, because if you enjoy it that much, that's enough benefit and pleasure that you get out of it. But I don't want to say that when I was elected to the council many years ago, that Mayor Linnell asked me to represent the council and the mayor on the Power Board. So at that time, I sat in Richard's seat, and over the years, it's been different things. But as mayor, you became to appreciate, first of all, you folks that are elected and willing to spend some time and effort and all that goes into that, to represent the city's citizens and to try to make the city a very, very good place to live. So my compliments and gratitude go to each of you, and as well as that to the great staff and the mayor and so forth, city manager, and each of you that are department heads, take care of the legal matters, and on and on and on. And I could say that to every department that I've had an opportunity to have some involvement with, and that's been everyone in some way, and what people try to do on the outside, like Chris, the park next door, and on and on. I hate to start mentioning anybody, because it's been a great privilege to work with Alan and some of his predecessors on the board, and the police department, and the fire department, the street department, the water department, parks and recreation, and on and on, and the council members, many, many of whom I have the opportunity to rub shoulders. So when you're surrounded with wonderful people that feel the same as you do and have that passion to try to make this a good place to be, it's not really a difficult responsibility. But nevertheless, you have to put your name and your efforts on the line, and that's what you folks are doing. So I appreciate my family and others who have supported me and all that's gone on over 20 years. And so Alan, I'll miss that close association, but I'll sure have an interest in things that go on. Again, thank you for the opportunity to have that, and I thank the citizens for that. And with that, may the good Lord bless you as you assume these responsibilities, and I know that you'll do everything you can to help us go onward and upward in the days ahead. So with that, thank you very much.
Mayor Pro Tem, may I make a comment?
Yes, go ahead.
Mayor Cushing, you probably don't remember this, but 23 years ago, I came to your office and asked you the possibility of having a car show in Bountiful with a complete presentation, and you let me get about a fifth of the way through it and stopped me and said, "Do it." I want you to know, because of this Bountiful Rotary Coast for Kids Car Show, we have closed more than 16,000 children in our area with winter coats, mittens, and boots, who didn't have the opportunity to have those. I just want to thank you, Mayor, for giving us that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your long service to our city. Now we'll move to item number seven on our agenda, which is the consideration of approval of ordinance 2021-04. And for this presentation, we're gonna turn our time over to our city planner, Mr. Francisco Astorga.
Thank you. Is it okay if I do my presentation from here?
That's just fine with me.
Thank you. This is for you to consider approval of ordinance number 2021-04, amending section two of Bountiful City Ordinance 2019-05, which contained the development standards of the Renaissance Town Center Development Plan. If I could summarize this entire current request by the applicant, we could do it by turning over to page 39, and in your packets, we provided an 11-by-17 copy of that same page. I have bad eyes, so I need some assistance from time to time, so I thought this would be helpful. I apologize I didn't put a north arrow on here, but you could figure that out, that is to the left. On this development plan, is what I'm calling it, or condensed updated map, what you see across the top is Main Street with Highway 68 on the bottom, 1800 South on the right and 1500 South on the left. Now, just to better help you get acquainted, if you're not too familiar with the site, the three buildings in gray are the buildings that are currently already up and running. They're already there, including also the one with that bluish color, that would be Lot 9. So this would be 1, 7, 6, and 9. Lot 2 is the current parking garage that's there. Lot 12 is not a parking garage that is there, that is a future parking garage. And the other somewhat of a question that I got from people is that Lot 19, that is a building that is there, that is the Maverick, that does not reflect this. This reflects a teardown of that Maverick. It was never contemplated for that gas station to remain in place, as you can see it there. So now that we've got, we're better acquainted, or we have our bearings, I could focus on the top portion of it. That is the true amendment that we've had. Everything on the bottom is more of an update as we're cleaning up the document, as we're moving forward. So we're gonna start on the right, that is Lot 19. That is a complete change in use. It was, actually, before I go there, let me backtrack just a little bit. The major decision to rezone this property from general commercial to, from general commercial and professional office planning and development came in June of 2019, when that's when the big decision was made to rezone this property from those two designation, general commercial and professional office, to mixed-use residential. The code indicates that, at that time, the developer was able to build a predominant land use in form of multi-family residential use with some of these, I think I'm calling them secondary types of uses, and that's all allowed in the code. And that's when the specific heights for all of these pads or sites, they were finally codified, and they were finally determined. With that said, the original request from the applicant was to increase, I think, all of the building heights, which, after the planning commission provided their recommendation, the applicant provided an amendment to their application to only change the height of Building 19, that's on the top right, in conjunction to their request to change that use, that was 100% professional office, they would like to change it to 100% residential. They would like to amend the building height from 42 feet, which was what was specified in that 2019 approval, to 46. That same 2019 approval did contain some discrepancies in terms of how to measure height, in terms of whether you do it in a number of floors, whether you do it in a number of stories, and it also provided a more of a vertical linear determination, which is the height. Both the developer and I found that to be confusing to, for someone in the future, to have a different interpretation. So the developer and staff decided that it would be time to clean that up and to use the standard that is, that doesn't change, it's not up to interpretation, which is the linear vertical component. So we'd like to clean that up, not just on this site, on all of them, so it would be based on feet, and it's the same way that we measured all of our buildings throughout Bountiful, which is from average grade. So this is part of the amendment as well. In essence, that's Lot 19, we do explain that it's about 5,000 square foot, an increase in square feet. The next one is Lot 16, which is already in approved site plan. I believe that got approved sometime in July. They have till this July for them to pull that building permit, as our site plan process have a one-year expiration date. There were some minor amendments that didn't trigger the substantial clause, and that's why we were able to move forward with that approval without going through amending this actual development plan. The next one is Lot 14, that is the big building right in the middle, with that W or M type of shape as shown on this, which does indicate an increase in units of 81. It does have about 90,000 square feet of additional square footage. The height of this building is to be, is to remain the same that was originally approved in 2019. We want to stick to the 65 feet. The next item is Lot 11, which is identified in 2019 as residential and office. The developer would like to change that to residential, office, and commercial. There is an increase of about 46 units, 35,000 additional square footage of residential. We lose 3,350 office space, and then there's a gain of commercial space of 15,000 square feet. In essence, I hope that you were able to get most of it from this exhibit. I produced this exhibit, as it took a few days, maybe weeks, to decipher exactly what was being requested by the applicant. As far as the number of building pads and sites, circulation, and traffic, it's the same as before. The only caveat that I'd like to point out is regarding parking. The code specifically indicates that we get to specifics of parking at site plan review. And even though a parking study was indeed produced in 2019, we didn't feel that we needed to tie the parking to a specific date and time, as that parking analysis that was based on a shared analysis was based on recommendations published by the ITI, that's the Institute of Transportation Engineers, that's what we use when looking or comparing different sites, and that specific study was provided, and we can discuss rates, but we've had an agreement that, with the applicant, that whenever a new site plan is submitted, which is required, before we're able to issue a building permit for each one of these sites, we would go back and take a look at industry standards, we would go back and take a look at industry trade, not trades, but what I'm trying to say is the standard trends, industry trends, and then we'd be able to, by the study that is provided, we were able to make sure that the site can be parked. That is a definite alternative from the current rates that we have in our code, which is only allowed in this zone and in other commercial sites throughout the city, where the applicant is able to demonstrate that because of different uses that are used during different times throughout the day, that parking is able to be shared. I don't have anything else to present. I will be more than happy to answer any questions that you might I will be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have for me at this time. We do recommend that you hold a public hearing and that you move forward with the proposal. The planning commission did add an additional condition of approval, and that's the fourth bullet point on page 33, where the commission felt that at a minimum, that this site had to have at least two pads with restaurants with a combined minimum square footage of 14,200. That number was based on two of the four or five sites that the developer has indicated that would like to have restaurants. If we go back to the condensed updated map, there are the buildings located on the, on the bottom right, I guess that would be the southwest quadrant with 13, 15, 15A, 18 and 17. Currently, the applicant has indicated a, not a request, but a desire to have all these sites be restaurants, that would be about 38,500. He doesn't know that he can accommodate exactly the, this exact square footage of restaurant, and the planning commission felt that it would, it was necessary to add that additional condition of approval for a minimum, as indicated in the staff report of 14,200. So this is a public hearing. We do recommend that you hold it and that you consider approving it. Again, I'll be more than happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
Do we have any questions from the council before we go to a public comment? No? Okay. At this point, we will then hold our public hearing and invite anyone from the public that would like to offer comments to come forward. If you choose to offer comments, if you'll please give us your name before you start your comments, and also let us know where you live.
I don't usually do this, but let me address Mayor Protam Bradshaw and the city council. I want to compliment, I make sure I get Mr. Astorga, right?
You got it.
I've spoken to him by phone several times. I'm the one who emailed you with the challenge. So I live on 1950 South, which is a block or two away from the Renaissance Town Center.
Just for the record, we, I know you emailed this, but will you give us your name for anyone who might be listening online?
Okay, sorry. Like I said, I'm not.
That's okay.
I'm new to this, so, Ken Isaac.
Thank you.
Ken Isaac, 1950 South. So, you know, myself and my family, we use those streets all the time around the Renaissance Town Center. I've lived in the area where I am 25 years, but I was born in the old South Davis Hospital. I've been in Bountiful 56 years then. Bountiful is special. Bountiful has standards. That's why we live here. That's why people like to live here. My concern is, as we go forward, I wonder if we've got a plan for Bountiful going forward. So as I spoke to Mr. Astorga, Bountiful's parking for multiple units, as I said in the email, are quite a bit more than we're allowing at the Renaissance Town Center, which was approved in 2019. So as we put more people there, then we put more cars there. What I've seen in my street, as I leave my street, two new housing developments went in. These housing developments allowed some of the same things that the city council allowed at Renaissance Town Center for the developmental plan. And that's why I made the challenge to park over there at Mill Creek Junior High. Did anybody do that? So as you walked over from Mill Creek, and if you want, myself and my wife will happy to drive you back, because it's a ways away, but you walked across the city street, as Mr. Astorga will point out, if it's not the wintertime and not snowing, if you lived right here, would you park over there at Mill Creek for the overflow lot? Because that's what we're allowing to be counted, right? Because that development is about a half mile long, right, north to south? And we say right there in the, in the site plan, that they can count any spot. They need one spot that's adjacent, I guess, to their building, but the other spot could be anywhere. My point is, those are the streets that I use every day. If we have cars parked up and down them, because they don't want to park over at Mill Creek, you would park right here, right? I mean, if your city, if it's the city council and the street is open, wouldn't you just park right there instead? So what happens, when I try to leave my street, because of two new housing developments who had that same type of parking allowance, they had enough spots, but those spots were inconvenient for the residents, so now they park on Second West as I try to leave. Now, all the time it's not packed, but sometimes it's so packed, I have a tough time getting out, and it frustrates me. So that's what I want us to know going forward, is Bountiful has standards. If we lower these standards, where are we going to be in that 20 years? So now I will live with, you know, cars blocking my view of Second West when I try to leave, and there's no redress for that. I mean, I guess I could call the city and say, "Hey, paint the curb," or whatever. So I'm concerned that we don't have enough parking here, and going forward here, and to every new development, are, do we have a plan? I mean, if we're going to lower our standards for parking, let's just do it then and not pretend we have another, you know, city code that says, "If you have a one-bedroom, it's 175, and if you have a two-bedroom, I mean, 1.75 stalls, and a two-bedroom, 2.25," I can't remember. Let's just say we don't have that standard then, if we're not going to adhere to it. Now, I know parking doesn't make a developer money. Office space, retail space, restaurants and apartments make a developer money, but it frustrates us that have to use those city streets if they're impacted. Anyway, we need development, we need people, we welcome new people, but let's make sure in 20 years, in 40 years, that Bountiful has a standard, and it doesn't have to be like Salt Lake, it doesn't have to be the national standard, let's make it Bountiful's standard, so that we still retain that, beautiful homes, gardens, streets, the reason why we live here. So that's my concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to come forward for public comment?
Hello, my name is Karma Hyde. I'm a resident of Bountiful. I live at 295 South Main Street. Just a little over, I guess it was in 2019, several of us from our neighborhood came because parking between 1800 South, below 1800 South was so impacted that the mayor, not the mayor, but the chief of police, Tom Ross, had a study done after we came to the meeting and found that there were cars parked on both sides of the street, and there were five egresses, is that what you say, apartments or condos that came out onto Main Street. And there had been an increase of car accidents during that time. And so they finally were able to speak with the people at Willy Ford, and they were, after that time, only allowed to park, up to the current time, park on the side of the street where Willy Honda or Willy Ford is. They were parking on both sides of the street. It has been so much better since that time. I would hate to see, in light of the comments that were just made about parking in that area, that we would now then have the same thing happening just a block above us with cars on both sides of the street. And I, I didn't know until just a couple of hours ago that this meeting was being held, and so I haven't looked at all of the plans in great detail, but to have almost 500 units in that area seems almost incomprehensible to me, especially if you consider that in many of those, there will be more than one person. Where do cars go if there are going to be restaurants? Where do those go? It just feels kind of distressing. So I don't know when this is going to be voted upon or what's going to happen, but I, I have great concerns, just from the past experience that I've had, that when this happened five years ago, I just, all of a sudden, it's like, what is going on here? We have cars everywhere. We can't, people can't see coming out of their driveways, people can't see, you know, buses have to park in the middle of the street to pick up customers. It was just horrible, and I would hate to see anything close to that happen again, just that part of it, let alone whatever impact it has with having so many people. Where will they be going to get onto the freeway to go to work if they're traveling south? Which roads will be impacted for that? You know, these are roads that we have here, there's not a huge amount of traffic. What if that is, you know, 10 times that much after these places are built? What's going to, what is that going to be like? There'll be street lights probably instead of four-way stops, or, you know, I just don't like the feel of it at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to give comment? Thank you.
My name is Brenda Rucuya. I live on 50 West and 1800 South, but I also have an extra in on this one. I am a registered nurse, and I have worked at Renaissance Tower 1 for 15 years. Actually, we're going on 17 years since the day that it was built. I too have a great concern about the construction of these new buildings, and I will tell you why. Right now, if you look at the parking structure of Renaissance Tower 1, you could easily argue that only half of that parking structure is used, because there are three floors. Most of the people park on the west side. The entire third, set bottom floor and middle floor, the holy side, isn't even being used. That is absolutely true. No offense to the designer, that parking structure is horrible. If you come up the middle aisle, you cannot see, because of the way the parking is designed and because of the way the walls are built, you cannot see out past either side until your car is halfway into the oncoming traffic of people coming from the other way. As they come up the ramp, you cannot see them because they are coming out from the middle structure. Now, having had to design my own parking structure at my house and knowing what the fencing codes are, as to how tall my fence can be from where my driveway is, I can guarantee that is not up to code. It is also so tight that two cars have a very difficult time when there is parking on either side to pass by each other. Now, I will also say that I could very easily say that 70% of the people that drive there are older people who are coming to see their doctor or coming to my surgical center. I don't have enough handicap parking, I don't have enough parking to help them out, and I have seen numerous, numerous close misses as I take patients out that are trying to hit their brakes there. Now, if you want to add to that, 1,000 people, because you have 450 units being built, that are parking there, that are trying to get in and out as old people are coming in for their surgery or coming to see their orthopedic surgeon or coming to see their ENT. And then you add to that, all of the people that are coming to restaurants and all of the people that are parking on the street. Oh, that's another one. As you come down the ramp, quite frequently, there is a lot of parking that is on the side right there, and I'd be happy to take any one of you and show you. We get the car dealership enterprise that have parked their cars right there. We have to pull out all the way into the street before we can see past all of those cars parked there. And again, multiple times over the 17 years that I have worked, I've almost been hit or I have seen near misses. We are lucky that we haven't had any yet. Being that I live on 1800 South, it's a relatively busy road in and of itself, because we have a funnel of all of the traffic up on top coming down 1800 South. If you question that, come when they should do the fireworks and just see the kind of funnel that it becomes as everybody comes up and down, that especially around 8 o'clock in the morning when the kids are going to school, around 3:30 at night when they're going home. You add to it 1,000 people, an additional, how many different units? I'm not sad that there's units being built, I want people to come to Bountiful, it's a beautiful place. But I am afraid that with the traffic and the parking problems alone, we are going to ruin a very lovely, wonderful, old piece of Bountiful. That's what I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else, please?
My name's Janet Baller, and I live on 160 West, 1950 South in Bountiful. Interesting to hear the other two responses, because those are the things, part of what had affected me already, including the developments at the bottom of our street on 200 West right there in 1950 South, that I can't see to turn around the vehicles to get out to go already. And then you wonder how much congestion would be added already of where the streets go. So pretty much our exits are always coming down, and I either need to go down 1500, 1800 South, or Main Street, or 1500 to get to anywhere. And I know they closed off the one right there at the bottom of Fifth West where you would turn to go to Woods Cross High. So all that traffic now has to come up as well to go over below Willy Honda, not above it, below it, to be able to get somewhere, so that's all just been funneled up where usually we'd go. So I would, first I need to ask, because I'm not an expert, I just tried to listen closely, is it 81 extra units they're asking for in one building in the increase, and then 46 extra in the others? Is that what?
Mr. Astorga, could you help clarify that for us?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm so sorry. That's what I was arguing, I don't know if it was Building 11 that you said wanted additional 46 units?
Let me, let me run it this way. In 2019, the city approved 327 residential units. Now the count, the proposed count is 490, which is an increase of 163 overall.
Okay. Sorry, even more than I was thinking, I thought it was 127. Yeah, I would just beg not to add the extras, it's already going to be, I'm overwhelmed with what will already be put there, so much high-density housing. Is there green space for us at all here for families or for anyone to see anything different than just the big, high-density housing going in everywhere they're going with how many people are packed into them? And yet each household really has two cars. We watch that on the ones below, I'm not sure where they go when it snows, but they are always blocking the road wherever you try to get, and not even safe to cross the street, because you can't see between them. How does that extra 146 units impact our schools? How does it impact the neighborhoods? How does it impact the parks? We need space for these people to enjoy Bountiful like we do too. We're beautiful homes and gardens. So I think we would really like to encourage that, just to stay the same. Sorry, I had one more question right there on the green space. I think the people that come and are asking, when I heard other kitchen, kitchen advises to put an ear to the people, and I think your people of Bountiful do like to welcome increase in growth, but in a way that contributes to the feeling and the beautiful, I don't know, it's just a lovely place, Bountiful. So if we could contribute and build it and better Bountiful instead of overwhelming the systems, overwhelming the roads, you can't get anywhere, be the big backed-up main streets to go through, that's not what we're about. So hopefully there'd be some green space or some other, I don't know where you'd develop the road to do that, but access, because it will certainly impact us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional people wanting to offer comment? Okay, seeing none, bring it back to the council for any additional clarifying questions or comments. Mr. Astorga, you look like you've.
Yeah, I'd like to clarify that the planning commission did not forward the recommendation of increased height, as at that time, they were going for most buildings being increased a story or two. So that, their recommendation was not, they did not include that in it. And that's why I worded it differently on page 33. As a professional staff, we looked at the impacts of just the additional four feet of Lot 19, and our logic was that based on the fact that Lot 16, which is already approved at 45 feet, it would be somewhat consistent with it. So I just wanted to make that clarification here. I didn't in my presentation. I could answer any other, that or any other types of questions that you might have for me.
You look like you have a question. Go ahead.
Well, do we think there would be value in sending it back to the planning commission for their input? Kendalyn, what are your thoughts on that as?
I don't think so. They, they looked at this in depth. I mean, we've seen this many times. You know, it seems like we see this every five years. So I think we had a really public, robust public process, and Richard probably remembers because he was serving on the. And Richard probably remembers because he was serving on the planning commission at the time, two years ago, when there was a lot of public input. And so the planning commission felt like at that time, the heights that were set were, um, were the highest that they would, that they would recommend going because at that time, we did hear from a lot of the public and spent a lot of time looking at this. And so that's why the public, the planning commission felt that they didn't want to allow any increase in height. So, you know, also just for a little bit of information, there is a traffic engineer on the planning commission. And, and so he looks, he looks at things like parking and traffic for a living. And he said that part of what is good about this is that it's right on the BRT. So it's a, yeah, it's Bus Rapid Transit. So it's, um, so it encourages people that want to use transit to live there. And with the growth, what he, what he said to me was that with the growth that we're, that we're going to face in Bountiful, it's, um, you know, it's not just a question of if we'll grow, but when, you know, how quickly we'll grow. And we know that our population's expected to double in the next twenty years. And so these, these are questions about things like where our children will live or, um, and so there are, there are, there is a need for density. And if we look at our city, where it makes sense to have density, if you look at Renaissance, it's a good place for it because there's already a really high medical tower. There's already neighboring sites that are, that have more density. And it is right on the transit line there. And so we are going to, our city is going to change. In twenty years from now, no doubt about it, whether we want to or not, whether we plan for it or not, our city will change. And this is private property. And the owner of this private property has the right to develop the property. But I do think that we can try to be wise. We, we owe it to our residents to try to be wise. But really, the, the owner of this private property has a right to develop it. And what I, one thing I really like about this plan is that every time a new site is approved, they have to come back and they have to talk about how they're meeting parking requirements. And so this isn't just a one-time, one-time thing where we approve it and then it's done forever. Every time they have a new site that they want to be approved, then they have to come to us and show us how they're meeting the parking requirements for that, for that each new building. And so this really isn't much of a change at all of what we have seen in the past. And in twenty nineteen, when we really did have a very involved public process, this doesn't vary much at all from what we, what we looked at at that time.
Can I answer your question? Do you have any followers?
Yes, and may I just, to add on to that, Councilwoman Harris, just for the record and for those who are listening, on page thirty-seven in our packet, it specifically says, "As requested by staff, the applicant added a statement on the parking plan, which indicates that each lot submitted for site plan review will submit and update the parking plan table showing the number of planned stalls meet the parking ratios." So, and then this allows the applicant and the city to be comfortable with the provided development to check in, to make sure that the entire development would be in line to meet parking. So that is, um, just adds on to what Councilwoman Harris was indicating, that although this is an overarching plan, each, each lot will be vetted in a more thorough fashion as we go along in the planning process. Am I interpreting that correctly?
You're absolutely correct, which is in complete compliance with what the code says. If you turn to page sixty-one, this is the exercise that we would go through after, as we review each single site plan. It's, it's color-coded. And if, if I could pick on one lot just for kicks, we'd pick on Lot Nineteen, which by the way, that it was anticipated that that lot would also have underground parking. It tells you where is that leftover parking. So, so even though we can't control human behavior, we can't control someone walking five hundred or a thousand feet, we, that's where we check to make sure that the site can fit all the parking that is required. And we did that as we recognized that with Mr. Broadhead, we didn't want to be left over at the very last lot and said, oh, you can't park it. I guess you can't build it. We didn't want to run out of land. So we're doing a check analysis after every single site plan review before the planning commission. Ultimately, you, you're the land use authority when it comes to those site plan reviews, that we would go back and, and update the extra, the parking impact plan to make sure that we can always park it per the parking shared analysis that is then submitted with the latest trends and information submitted to the city.
Any additional questions?
May I?
Please, go ahead.
Mr. Storga, the, the only height increase I see listed on your master sheet here is for Lot Nineteen.
That is correct.
So there's just one lot requesting a raise in height by four feet?
That is correct.
Okay. I've also asked Mr. Chaney if he could bring in some traffic statistics from Fifteen Hundred South, Eighteen Hundred South, Main Street and Four Hundred West, as close as he could get to this area with some traffic counts. And I'd ask him to share those if he would.
Sure, I'd be happy to. So I would just characterize traffic volumes in this area as fairly low compared to other areas in town. Now, let's put some numbers to that.
Please.
On the east side of the development, on two, on the Two Hundred West stretch between Fifteen Hundred South and Eighteen Hundred South, I'm going to give you a couple sets of numbers. I'm going to give you a high over the last five years and a low. So at Fifteen Hundred South, Two Hundred West, southbound, the high was forty-four hundred cars in twenty sixteen. In twenty twenty, the low was thirty-five hundred and eight, three, three thousand five hundred and eight. Now, these are daily vehicle counts. Main, Main Street, south of Fifteen Hundred South, the high was in twenty fifteen with a count of eight thousand four hundred and sixty-two cars. The low was in twenty twenty, four thousand eight hundred eighty-six.
Twenty twenty, we have a public.
Excuse me, excuse me. Oh, we are in a public, we're, we've closed the public hearing and we are now at council questions. So we'd ask that you just refrain from outbursts. Thank you. Nick, sorry, if you can't, if you can't follow the rules, then we'll have to ask you to, to leave. So we are now at council questions. Thank you.
I, I don't know why discussing data has all of a sudden gotten us in an uproar. You had your opportunity to speak. So if, if we could just have Mr. Chaney share the numbers with us that I've asked for, without further interruption, that'd be great.
Mr. Chaney, if you'd proceed with the numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. Fifteen Hundred South is by far the highest volume in the area.
Could I, sorry, Mr. Chaney, I did not catch the end of the low in twenty twenty, four thousand and then?
Main Street, four thousand eight hundred and eighty-six.
Thank you.
For Fifteen Hundred Southwest of the roundabout, the high was in twenty fifteen with a count of ten thousand nine hundred and thirty-three cars. Twenty twenty count, eight thousand four hundred and ninety-one. As you move west past SR One-O-Six, now this count is taken at Five Hundred West. So it is a little bit farther away on Fifteen Hundred South. The high in twenty fifteen, again, ten thousand five hundred. The low in twenty twenty of seven thousand one hundred and eighty-seven cars. Now, in those five years in between, they're up and down. Somewhere around eight thousand cars probably in the last five years would be a, a good characterization for traffic on Fifteen Hundred South. As you move down to Eighteen Hundred South, if you want to run through those real quick.
Please.
At Two Hundred West, on the east side of the intersection, the high volume was actually in twenty sixteen with a count of seven thousand and eight cars. The low is in twenty twenty, six thousand two hundred and fourteen. On Two Hundred West, at the Eight Hundred South intersection, the high was in twenty fifteen also, four thousand five hundred and fifteen cars. A low in twenty nineteen, three thousand four hundred and eighty-four cars. And the twenty twenty volume, three thousand seven hundred and nineteen cars. The west side of that intersection, the high volume was actually in twenty sixteen, seven thousand one hundred and thirty-six cars. The twenty fifteen count, six thousand four hundred and sixty-five. And a twenty twenty volume of five thousand nine hundred and seventy-one. Main Street, south of Eight Hundred South, a twenty fifteen volume of eight thousand one hundred and sixty-four. And a twenty twenty volume of five thousand four hundred and eighty-six. West of the intersection at Main Street on Eight Hundred South, volumes are typically in about the eight thousand range. But there is one real outlier. In twenty nineteen, the low volume was four thousand two hundred and thirty-four cars. Otherwise, the volume is right around eight thousand cars. These are, I say these are relatively low counts because our major volumes are obviously Fourth North, Fifth South, Fifth West, where we have volumes that are twenty to twenty-five thousand cars a day. So at the most, we're, we're really talking about half of the volumes.
Ms. Nigga, did you have any follow-up questions for Mr. Chaney?
Well, just a follow-up comment. I, the, the low numbers, in fact, the twenty twenty artificially low numbers, although twenty twenty wasn't the lowest in many of them, aren't interesting to me. The interesting numbers to me are the regular numbers that show that if every unit in this complex parked two cars and those cars were on the street every, or not on the street, but driving on these streets every day, it would increase the parking, or excuse me, the driving number of cars on the roads by significantly less than ten percent overall. I mean, it, I know that it feels like when we get a new development in our, our neighborhood, and I have plenty of apartment complexes next to where I live, that it's going to be the end of the world. And it feels like it's going to double our traffic and we're never going to be able to get out. But increasing the traffic flow by less than ten percent over the course of the day is a pretty insignificant thing, in my opinion. So that's why I asked him to bring those numbers to us. I wanted, I mean, if, if these numbers were always thirty-five hundred cars or, or thirty-four hundred and eighty-four cars, it would worry me more than the counts that these streets are already designed to carry.
So, and when you come to that number, you're, you're looking at if this whole development were built?
Completely.
Yeah, which we know will be very developmentally, you know, it's going to be one building here, one building there. It's not going to come, it's not going to be building up overnight.
Indeed.
The whole thing.
So that's built out to its entirety, less than ten percent addition. If there are two cars for every unit and those cars are on the street every day. So just an interesting number to me.
Yeah.
Any additional questions from the council?
I just have one. There is, is there sufficient parking within the complexes to not have any parking on the street? Francisco?
That would be determined at, at each subsequent site plan review. The way, the reason I, I worded it like that is because we have a standard now. We, we don't know what the standard might be in five or ten years. We don't know what the trends are, or what the trends are going to be or, or in, in five to ten years. If you're asking me, does this meet the, the current code? And the answer is no. But that's why, that, that's the beauty of the mixed-use development, that because it is, you could have shared parking in terms of the same parking space that a resident, a residential unit uses. Now it could be shared by that same office. It's, 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 it's part of that analysis based on the fact that it's right on a bus rapid transit route. So that is your purview. As a land use authority, you have that ability to say, parking requirements, and I'm reading the code, shall be determined per existing city standards for each use. However, parking requirements may be reduced if it can be shown that a shared parking analysis is a viable alternative. We have received a viable alternative by a transportation engineer indicating that this would work.
Can I ask another question? With more restaurants, more restaurants would have their patrons coming after work hours, which would be the same time that individuals would be coming home. So that would be an increase in parking within the facility.
It, it would. It goes back to, to what I just said, that based on that alternative submitted by that consultant, it's indicated that it would work out. In twenty nineteen, I believe the magic number was fourteen thirty-nine, was what was anticipated would be the, the parking count. And the site accommodated such. The, the, the whole theme or purpose of the mixed-use, and it literally says that it's supposed to be a live, work and play type of development. So we recognize that restaurants do have higher parking counts than offices and residential. It's exactly what we want in this part of town, to, to make that, that city goal that we have, this to be a true village or a, a live, work and play type of development. So we, we do base, the, the decision was based in twenty nineteen to honor that recommendation from that transportation engineer that indicated that they, they, they could park the, all, all entire uses.
So at that time, did he take in consideration that there'd be these extra restaurants?
Yes.
He did?
Yes.
Okay.
So that, that hasn't changed.
All right. Thank you.
And can I just make one quick clarification? When he says that it doesn't meet the code, he then, he then explained an exception to the code, which is in our code, which means it does meet our code. So I just want to make that clarification.
Yeah, so, so in summary, it's, although this is an over, a big picture plan, as we build one, or as we approve one site plan or one building, one by one, and as trends change, as the population chains, changes, or as traffic flow changes, for that matter, we can make adjustments as needed. Because it will be slowly built over time and we can, and we can make adjustments when we need to.
Correct. The, the, the future effects of the BRT line has, they haven't even been factored in.
Okay. So if we, when, when and if this is approved, it's not set in stone?
Correct. This is, this is the master plan that would pave the way for the future development. And, and the reason we're changing it right now was because of Lot Nineteen, was because it's changing use. And it also created an opportunity for us to clean up the master plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any further questions? If not, then I have a couple of questions. Francisco, I seem to recall that in the earlier plan that was approved for Lot Fourteen, there was underground parking. This map that you've created, it doesn't, it doesn't show us any of that potential underground parking. So I wanted to make sure I had remembered that correctly.
On that, I'm going to, I believe it does, but I would like to defer yes or no to the applicant. Fourteen does have underground parking. Thank you.
Okay. And then my, my additional question, and this, this may also be a question for our city engineer. Having unfortunately spent a lot of time at the medical building and used the parking lot, I concur that the parking lot is, is very difficult to use. And that its access points don't allow for great sightlines for those entering and exiting. As this parking lot would potentially be expanded, what opportunities would we have to improve those sightlines so that it's safer for people exiting and entering that parking structure?
It may be difficult to make any modifications in the existing parking structure, but certainly there would be opportunities to review that in the second phase.
And so then, Francisco, is it, is it thought that Lot 2 and Lot 12 will become one big parking lot, or would there be a separation between them?
Looking at this, and this is, this was always intended to be a concept. It, it looks like it would be combined, again, head not from the applicant. This is, they're, they're completely two separate parking structures.
But connected. Correct. There, you can, you can travel from one to the other, but they're two different structures.
We're working on two different concepts. One is connected, one is not.
Thank you, Bruce.
Any additional questions from the council? I think that answers my questions at this time. So with that, we'll bring it to the council for any potential action.
Maybe I do have one more question, if I could.
We'd be happy to return to questions.
Lot 14, thank you, has increased by a pretty good number of residential units. Has it gained a limb or a wing, or have the units gotten smaller? Or how have we accomplished the increase in the number of units there without increasing the height of the building?
I believe that the developer's going to show me what they have this Thursday.
Okay.
I, I haven't seen any specific site plan or concept just yet, literally. We've been discussing it for, for quite some time. We've been addressing some components on a, on a pre-application basis, but I have not seen, I've yet to see a footprint. And I do have a meeting, I think specifically for this building this week.
Perfect.
And as a follow-up to that, again, when we do approve Lot 14 and that site plan, all of that, we will approve that at that time.
Correct. So, at site plan review, you get to see each site in detail. You get to see elevations with materials and...
And those parking requirements. Thank you.
Correct.
Yep.
And the green space requirements.
Will each individual building also pass through planning commission before it comes to the city council again?
Yes.
Thank you. Any additional questions before returning it back to council action? Seeing no further questions, to the council for any action.
Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, I'll be happy to make a motion that we approve Ordinance 2021-04 as presented to us with the conditions that the planning commission passed along to us, also increasing the height of the one building by four feet.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously.
One item of interest potentially, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, if I could. Our company has worked on several projects in Salt Lake along transit lines who have zero parking requirement, and I hope that this council and future councils will not fall victim to the zero parking requirement allure of transit-oriented developments. But it's interesting to see projects being built on transit lines that literally have no parking requirement. So, we hope that doesn't come here.
Thank you for the additional insight and wisdom. We will now turn to item eight on the agenda, which is the consideration of approval of the purchase of four transformers. And we will now turn to Mr. Allen Johnson for a description of that item.
Well, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, and council, it's a privilege to be back in front of you again tonight. I apologize for speaking so much. I'll try and stay away for a day or two. What I have before you is, we have used four transformers through leaking and new development that we needed to replace. We did go out to bid to our two suppliers locally that supply it, and we ended up with two bids for these. And we would like to recommend, and the power commission would like to recommend, that we award the purchase of these four power transformers to Anexor Power Solutions for the total price of $43,238. Again, we have budgeted money for transformers as we go through. These will be placed in inventory and used as they need to be done, but then, basically, it's an inventory item that we do have a budgeted number to replace and move through transformers. So, it would be the power commission's staff's, you know, as recommendation that we move forward with this purchase.
Any questions for Mr. Johnson?
Move to approve as presented.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
We'll move to item number nine, consideration of the approval of a proposal for the construction of 10th North, and we'll turn to Mr. Chaney.
Thank you. I'm very happy to bring this item to you, to your attention tonight. The engineering department has put together a set of plans in preparation to execute the capital improvement projects on 10th North, given the construction climate, and not only for the availability of contractors, but also for materials, we're very nervous about putting this project out to bid. Pleased to report that MC Green &amp; Sun was the, the low bidder, and we did have the fortunate opportunity of opening three bids instead of maybe one or zero. The estimate for the project is probably a little higher than, than what we would have expected, but given the current climate for construction, I think it's, it's as expected. As you can see, we tweaked on the engineer's estimate pretty hard so that we could get, dial that right into what we thought construction costs would be. For those of you who are not familiar with MC Green, if you've driven on many of the concrete streets in town, you've driven on their work. Some of their work has stood the best, the test of time a little better than others, but we think that projects in the last 10 years have really dialed in on how we build these streets in town. The reason for building a concrete street on 10th North is twofold. One, the soils in that area are very poor. A concrete street essentially creates a bridge, a very long linear bridge, and distributes wheelloads over larger areas where an asphalt pavement would suffer deterioration. That's what we have over there now. So you end up with alligator cracking, potholes, and a much thicker pavement section. That becomes an issue when you start to rebuild a street because you have a myriad of utilities already in the street. You have water laterals, irrigation laterals, gas lines, gas laterals, and some of them aren't very deep. So you start to, to tangle with those. And the other implication of building an asphalt pavement section is that you've now removed a bunch of dirt and you have to find a new home for that dirt. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of room for just extra dirt at our landfill. So constructing a concrete pavement saves that space of the landfill, gives us a good street surface in the roadway. There's plenty of money allocated in our budgets in the street department. We have $1.2 million allocated in the current fiscal year, knowing that we're not going to get to construction until late in this year. We're not going to spend, you know, merely a, just a fraction of that amount. But we have budgeted an additional 1.2 in the upcoming fiscal year, so that will accommodate, between those two budget years, we'll have enough to accommodate the project. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you have.
I have a timeline question. So you mentioned that we'll start construction of the, of the road. The utilities, I understand, have already been started, but the construction of the road in the fall, will we build through the winter, or will we pick it back up in the spring?
We anticipate starting construction in the next six weeks, something like that. So we will build through this summer, have it finished September, late September typically.
Thank you. Any additional questions?
Question, if I could? Mr. Chaney, I don't see on the list of line items the dowels that will hold the slabs together, or hold them level. Will this be a dowelled slab project?
It will. The dowels are included in the pavement.
Okay.
Item for the paving itself.
And just because I'm old and have been here too long, I will let the council know that if you drive on a concrete street where the slabs have become uneven and your tires slap on the transition between those two slabs, it's because in the old days, they didn't put dowels in between the slabs. And now there are technologies that hold those slabs level and keep the street smoother.
You know, there's an upside to the slapping noise. Keeps you awake.
All the way across Kansas.
Keeps me awake at my house.
Well, in case the council needs to stay awake, then we'll recommend a certain section of Orchard. Any other questions?
And I'm happy to make a motion that we award the contract to MC Green at the unit prices presented.
I'll second.
Sounds like we have a second and a third. So with that, we'll place the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Looking forward to 10th North.
Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, seeing the signatures have all been gathered and reviewed by Mr. Chaney on the two easement releases, I'd make a motion that we release, release the two easements as requested.
Second? We have a second?
I'll second that.
Now we have a third, so thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We are now to the final item, number 12, everyone's favorite.
Madam Mayor, I motion that we adjourn for this evening.
We have a second to that?
No one?
All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.